Council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Council President Shannon Sherman, and I'll be presiding this evening. Also President are Council members Deb Rule, John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Groth. Council member Jill Aspero will be joining us shortly. Mayor Rongstad is absent this evening. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand. Are there any announcements from council tonight?
Madam President, yes, there are. Melissa's going to pull up some slides. So our numbers are soaring again. I'm sure everybody's aware of that. So I'm going to give everyone a little bit of a COVID update. We currently have ninety-two hospitalized as you can read, and we've had one hundred and eleven new cases in the Panhandle Health District. Can you scroll down a little bit, Melissa? All of our counties within the Panhandle Health District are again in the red zone. And then if you can switch pages, Melissa, and scroll up a little bit, a little more to that other number right there. You can see the total number of inpatients today was eighty-five, and the number of COVID patients requiring critical care is thirty-six. We technically really only have twenty-six critical care beds at Kootenay Medical Center. So we are getting to the point of a precipice. And if you can scroll down and start that short video, hang in there. It's about three minutes long. This was created on eight eleven, and so remember that other number that was up there by Dr. Scogman, Scoggins, and Hoopman giving an update as to where we stand down at Kootenay Medical Center.
All right, so today we're going to talk about COVID-19 updates, the global national Idaho local what we're experiencing here at Kootenay Health. Talk about the vaccines, facts and stats, and then also what we're seeing with the Delta variants. Then we'll get to the commonly asked questions and some live question and answer session at the very end. So globally, I think everyone by now understands that this has been unbelievable past twenty months. There's been over two hundred million cases of COVID-19 across the world, over four million deaths. New cases in the last twenty-four hours, this was information pulled about twenty-four hours ago, four hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then new deaths topped eight thousand in the last twenty-four hours globally. Nationally, we've seen similar patterns, thirty-five million cases diagnosed in the United States, six hundred and seventeen thousand deaths up to date as of yesterday. Twenty, in the last twenty-four thousand, twenty-four hours, ninety-one thousand new cases. And the new death numbers have been also increasing, four hundred and ninety-five deaths in the last twenty-four hours. Again, in the United States, thirty-five point five million people infected. India, which has had a big outbreak in one of the Delta variants, was favored head card by the Delta variant, thirty-one point eight, and it's still as well at twenty billion. And if you look at the next six countries, they're still less than the United States, thirty-four point seven million infections reported. In Idaho, we've had about two hundred and five thousand total cases. And within the last twenty-four hours, six hundred and twenty-six, and then full deaths since the beginning of the pandemic, about two thousand two hundred and seventeen. If we look at Kootenay County, we kind of break it down for our local little over twenty thousand positive cases. As of two days ago, two hundred and twenty-five deaths. We've had another death since then, so we're at two hundred and twenty-six deaths, it just wasn't reported. Currently, actually, I think seventy, this morning seventy-two or seventy-one, twenty-nine in critical care, and then our seven-day positivity rate, this is what Kootenay Health has has been twenty-eight percent of the tests that we've sent have been positive for.
Melissa, can you pause that for a minute?
Been tracking data from the very beginning.
So if you'll notice that current number hospitalized is sixty-seven on there, and this was on the eleventh. And then earlier up, we showed you that other stat that we're well into the eighty number now for hospitalizations. And I believe that would be seven days since today is the eighteenth. So, okay, Melissa.
Seventeen hundred total admins currently, actually, I think seventy, this morning seventy-two or seventy-one, twenty-nine in critical care, and then our seven-day positivity rate, this is what Kootenay Health has has been twenty-eight percent of the tests that we've sent have been positive for COVID. That's one of the highest numbers we've seen during this whole pandemic. And this is the data that we look at on a regular basis. As you can see, back in July, we had about a seventh percent positivity rate, and we've seen it increase over the last four weeks significantly of the where we are now. And that's gone along with an increase in the hospitalizations. So back in December, January, hopefully, everybody can see this, the gray bars show our positivity rate, and our admissions to the hospital mostly follow that positivity rate. And we're seeing the same thing now with an increased positivity rate leading to increased admissions, both to the acute care side of things and then also to the ICU. And I think this graph is telling also because you look back to the middle of it at what was our previous peak in December of twenty twenty and January of twenty twenty-one. We are vastly approaching that day by day. And I think our biggest concern is that we're going to not only approach but exceed it in the next short timeframe. This is something that we should all take, pay attention to. The, this is a description of the average age of our COVID-19 admitted patients to the hospital. And the blue lines represent patients eighteen to sixty years old, and the orange line represents patients sixty-one to eighty or older. And what you see is beginning back in December, the average age of our admitted patient began to basically fall, meaning the blue line was rising because we had younger and younger patients in the hospital. At the same time, the average age of the, of the, the number of admissions rather of our older patients began to decline. And we now are at a point where those lines are getting ready to cross, where our younger patients will exceed number of admitted of our older patients. So early on in this pandemic, there was a lot of talk about this being a disease of the elderly. That certainly may have been the case, but we are now seeing this as a disease of the hospitalization of the younger forties, fifties, and sixties. That's what we're seeing admitted to the hospital now.
Thank you, Melissa. You can pause it there. So again, just want to point out where things are going. It's out there. Our kids are going back to school. So I hope everybody's careful, and I would strongly encourage the community and the whole region to go ahead and get those vaccines. The last time I checked, Bonner County only had about a thirty-eight percent vaccination rate. So we are going to spread a lot. Apparently, it is affecting much younger. I think nationally, if anybody's watched the news, even smaller children are being hospitalized at a much higher rate. So I would like to strongly encourage everybody, let's protect those children who are not able to get the vaccines at this point. If you're under twelve, they have no control of what anybody else is doing out there. I would like to ask the council president at this time to take a moment of silence for all those new deaths that have occurred recently and for all the ones that have occurred since COVID started. Would that be? Thank you.
Absolutely. Melissa, can you please time a thirty-second moment of silence? Thank you.
That's thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that important update, Councilmember Rule. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Are there any announcements from staff?
As Council President, just briefly, we have a paving project that is occurring starting this week on Screw Street, right in front of Farm and Stedwell Elementary. So notices went to all the residents living along that stretch that, and this was, there was an update that we received from our city engineer Dan Tadic at the last council meeting. But work did start this week, and it's expected to end by Friday, August twenty-seventh, in time for school. So it's a complete repave, grading and repave there.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? All right. We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting. Can you hear me? I couldn't hear myself for a second. Regarding items listed on the consent calendar or any topic not listed on the agenda, this is not the time to speak on specific items listed on the agenda. If you would like to speak on such an item, please wait until we announce that item during the meeting. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of twenty minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Before we proceed with public forum at this time, I will take just a moment to recite the rules and procedure for public comments during Sandpoint City Council meetings, both during public forum and during other opportunities for public comment during the meeting. Please note, if you are participating by Zoom, you will need a working microphone in order to participate, and you will need to use the raise your hand option if you would like to be called upon to speak. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your, on your screen to unmute. You will need to press or click the unmute button in order to be heard. For those participating here in person, if you wish to speak, you will need to complete a sign-up form and hand it to the city clerk here at the front. The forms are available on the table by the door. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Please do not direct any questions to the city council or to staff during your comments, and do not approach the dais. If you have any materials for council, please hand them to the city clerk. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak during the public forum?
Not aware of anyone.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is I couldn't read that for a second. I'm having trouble.
Do you want me to recite that number?
Sorry, yeah, my, I'm having a problem with my glasses at this second. I'm so sorry.
It's small. The total amount of bills is one million nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents, reflecting one million two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents for regular payables and seven hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred and three dollars and ninety-three cents for payroll.
Thank you. Sorry, I was very blurry for a moment. I couldn't quite make it out. I think I need to move this farther away. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? I will, hearing now, and I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. So move. During discussion, this will be a real call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget and intent to use foregone levying authority. On July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, council adopted the preliminary budget, declared intent to use foregone levying authority, and pursuant to Idaho Code Section fifty dash one zero zero two, scheduled a public hearing with notice published twice in the Bonner County L E B. We'll begin with a presentation from City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton and Treasurer Finance Director Sarah Linz.
Thank you, Council President. We've prepared another presentation for the council tonight and also another summary for the public relative to the two thousand and twenty-two budget. Are, we have had our budget book posted online electronically for approximately a month, and this will be our third presentation, series of presentations over the budget. At the last council meeting, we held a in-depth budget workshop and went through more detail of the budget. So tonight, this will be more of a high-level summary, but we're prepared to answer any questions that council may have either following the presentation or after the public comment period on the budget. A review of our budget book in brief, and this will take us back out, using a different we're going to have to flip back and forth tonight a little bit because I want to. There we go. Reminder on the budget in brief, as shown, this is taken from our electronic book, budget book online. Our fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget as presented to council is forty million dollars, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. This is made up of governmental proprietary and fiduciary funds. We have covered our data, and these are our revenues as well as our budgeted expenditures based on all of our governmental proprietary enterprise and fiduciary funds across the city, again totaling the four forty million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine.
Jennifer, can I stop you for a moment to note that Councilmember Jill Aspero has joined us at by forty-six?
And I'm just working my way down quickly to our budget summary. We've also provided in our online budget book over the last month a summary of all of our budgeted expenditures by area across the city for the total amount of budget requested in our proposed budget. And our property tax summary, which we didn't cover, is, we covered this in our first presentation, not as much in depth in our last budget workshop. We've updated our property tax table with our final numbers that we received from the county. Based on the budget presented to council, our projected levy rate per thousand-dollar value of property is forty-seven seventy-three. I did want to touch tonight on, again, this is a discussion we've had over the last few years relative to the taxable value of our properties within city limits and the effects on the, on our property tax levy. We have seen since two thousand and seventeen, really beginning in our fiscal year twenty eighteen, we have seen our levy rate per thousand-dollar of taxable value decrease year over year, and that is directly related to the significant amount of assessed property taxable value that we are seeing within the city. We particularly saw a significant jump between fiscal year twenty twenty and the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And the primary reason for this is our assessed property taxable values were always a year behind. And due to new legislation that was passed by, our legislator signed in by the governor earlier this spring, it required that these become real-time numbers. So we saw actually a two-year, what would typically be for us, a two-year increase occur over a one-year period of time. And so that's where we saw the significant increase in twenty twenty-one. The impacts for us on this were when we're seeing that increase in overall taxable value as I showed up above, what we see is our levy rate decrease. And this change that occurred with chewing up the numbers to the current year this year affected us because we saw such an increase in the overall assessed property tax value that new properties that came on the rolls in the last year, they came in at the lower assessed value, or excuse me, the lower levy rate value because of the increase in the overall property assessed value. So as we mentioned in the budget workshop, we had a couple of changes in terms of projected revenues between our first presentation and then the budget workshop, and that was due to a reduction in new construction rolls coming in and anticipated amounts with that due to, again, the reduction in the property tax levy. Anything I missed there? We looked at this slide during our budget shop. We did do a M and O analysis. This is one of the things that we do every year, especially looking at our general fund, which is primarily funded with grants as well as property tax dollars, and we are looking at our M and O costs and, and how we're doing in terms of increases. Again, in this year's budget, we have included step increases for employees. We also included a one and a half percent cost of living increase. We do have some new positions as identified below in the general fund that are included as well. Overall, between our last fiscal year and the current fiscal year, our increase in M and O across the board, salary and benefits, purchase services, supplies and miscellaneouses at two point six seven percent increase. Again, a reminder that our CPI increase is four point seven percent. So we're, we're well within that range, and it has been a process over the last few years of us going through the budget year after year, kind of taking a look at our supplies, purchase services, and where we may have excess revenue and looking for cost efficiencies. We've done some technology improvements that have also resulted in some cost efficiencies. And the benefit with that is it frees up dollars for projects, and we're at that point of completing a number of master plans and having a number of capital projects planned in this budget and then also moving forward. Other news that we received this week, and I did want to talk about that a little bit while we were in budget, is our twenty twenty census results came out last Thursday. And a topic that we've had through our budget discussions over the last several years is the concern that we would lose our resort city status because, again, under Idaho statute, we lose that status once we reach a population of ten thousand. We've been anxiously awaiting for the twenty twenty census numbers, and twenty twenty census numbers came in at eighty-six thirty-nine. Incidentally, our numbers that we're doing based on, again, what we believe is a more accurate vacancy rate based on both new home starts, what we're seeing with short-term rentals, what we're seeing in the market, as well as, again, new housing stock coming online. We believe that we are well over ten thousand at this point. But this is a good thing for us in terms of remaining as a resort city. For the public on this, again, resort city status allows us to have local option taxes which require a super majority of citizen vote in order to approve. And one of those taxes that we have that we'll be talking about in the treasurer's report later tonight too, is a local option tax that is a bed, bed tax, resort city bed tax. That provides us, it's traditionally provided us about five hundred thousand dollars worth of funding per year. This year, you're going to see that we are significantly higher. We're all feeling the tourists, and we're seeing it in the data right now, too. And those dollars are used to support public safety services. So over time, services we might incur in the summer with police, some of our fire services as well as park services. Basically, it is tourists paying for some of the demands that they create on our city services in the summer months rather than our property taxpayers having to bear all of those costs. So the resort city status is important from that standpoint. Another tax that we had that sunsetted under our resort city status as approved by voters was our one percent local option tax, which funded the War Memorial Field projects, as we've talked about. Our population growth within city limits over the last decade, we've experienced a seventeen point three percent population growth, according to the Census Bureau, as compared to Bonner County, which was just over fifteen percent. Interestingly, we're trending the same as the entire state in terms of population growth, looking across the state. I also pulled a couple of other cities just for comparison basis because we're frequently hearing about Boise and it being one of the fastest or the fastest-growing city, larger city across the United States, and we're actually trending above Boise over the last decade. When we look a little bit south of us, and I think we're starting to see some of that growth pushing up our way, especially recently, Quarter Lane over the last decade has, has seen almost a twenty-four percent growth. And when I looked at postballs, it was about forty percent. So it is definitely in North Idaho, we are definitely seeing the growth again with census numbers. And again, we believe these are lower than what we're actually all feeling, seeing and experiencing here in the city. And keep in mind, again, this is twenty twenty census numbers. So we're looking at data based on these, the surveys and door-to-door surveys that were completed well over a year ago at this point. So we suspect it's, again, what we've seen is, feels like we're at that seventeen point three percent growth between last year and this year, I think, for most of us. Personnel in our budget, in our fiscal year twenty-one budget, we have included one hundred and twelve point nine five FTEs. We've had some discussions about how we get to a point nine five person working in here, and that takes into consideration some retirements we expect to be experiencing across the city as well as part-time employees as well. So that's kind of how we get to not a point five or a point seven five, but a point nine five in terms of total FTEs. A reminder about that, that fourteen of those employees are due to our shared fire services systems. So thirteen of those are employees who moved over to the city of Sandpoint under our joint powers agreement with Westside and Seco Fire Districts. And one of those also is the addition of the deputy fire chief here at the city rather than being employed by one of the other agencies. Sarah and I kind of did an analysis. Again, we, we try to look at our stewardship, what we're doing with our dollars, how we're growing as a city, how we're growing as a staff. And, and we look at CPIs, but with personnel today, we decided to go pull numbers and take a look at, now that we had census numbers, what was the census of our employee count here at the city in two thousand and ten compared to, again, we're a year ahead, but what we're projecting and proposing for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And in fiscal year twenty ten, we had ninety point two FTEs here at the city. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, when we take out the fourteen that are really because of shared fire and get down to, if we didn't have that happen as a city, how have we grown with this projected budget? It is ninety-eight point nine five FTEs, which is a nine point seven percent increase in the census of personnel when we're looking at a census increase of citizens of, in excess of seventeen percent. Again, as covered in the budget workshop, we have contemplated in this budget proposal a division reorganization. And this is splitting off a utility services division that is currently part of our infrastructure division, and this is to volume of workload, particularly And this is to volume of workload, particularly related to development and growth demands that are coming in. So this budget does include the addition of a utility services director. And this is again, kind of what this structure looks like, and we covered this at the budget workshop. I was asked by a couple of council members to do kind of a brief budget discussion by division and service area where we have seen some fairly significant increases from last fiscal year over this fiscal year. And so I've prepared a summary of that for you. In our central services division, our budget increases due to the addition of a point five FTE administrative assistant. As well as some vacancies that we have in that service area that we expect to fill. One thing on our budgeting process here at Sandpoint, that I think is really unique from most other governments. And you see impact to your budget number is when we have vacancies or we are expecting vacancies in an area. We budget for vacancy with a full family medical coverage coming in. Now, that's not what the majority of our employees have, but it ensures that we have the budget available. Should we hire somebody that elects full family, full family coverage, joining the city? We also budget the higher end of our step scale when we are budgeting as well. Particularly in these times where it's very competitive for employees and the market is very difficult to hiring employees. That gives us the flexibility within the approved range in our compensation plan. But the ability to hire in the right talent at the grade level approved by count, by council to fill our need. Sometimes we're at the lower end of the step system. Sometimes we're more at market rate. These days with the job market, we are typically hiring people in closer to the mid-range, which is a market rate. When you look at most governments, what they tend to do in order to be able to meet their budget year over year. What they tend to do is budget only a step one through a three. And they also will budget the lower end of employee costs for a new employee coming on, because it's a way that they can balance their budget. And then they're, they're working it year over year or month over month during the year in order to try to balance as they fill positions. And then commonly, what you also see then is when a vacancy comes open until all payouts have been made. So any separation pay for an employee, whatever that would mean, mean over a period of time, they will hold a position open and not fill it. Because they don't have the budget to be able to refill the position. That's one of the things that for us here at Sandpoint, we historically have had strong fiscal stewardship in our finance director treasurer position. That is a, it's a trend we're continuing under Sarah's leadership in that regard. So we budget so that we can fill positions. We budget so that we can afford to pay the costs rather than going and taking them away from projects or robbing Peter to PayPal somewhere in the budget. So that's one thing that I would note. And again, why you see specifically in here vacancies. And we see it in a couple of other areas as well. In our IT services, GIS, it's a combined budget. So in the past, IT was its own budget and GIS was a separate budget. Those are all combined into one and so you're seeing increases as a result of that being combined into one information technology services budget. As discussed at the budget workshop, we have added a 1.0 FTE help desk position currently, or we are contracting this workout. We believe we will achieve budget savings by bringing this in-house and will also provide better services to our employees as we are becoming more and more technology dependent. Additionally, as discussed in the budget workshop, we have a number of capital and security upgrades, upgrades on both the IT services side as well as the GIS side. Local governments are not immune to the cyber attacks that we hear a lot about in the news these days. And I can say that we have had some attempts here at the local level. And you wouldn't think it would be a small government like, like ours that is targeted, but we have been targeted. We've been targeted recently. And it is some of those smaller governments that are being targeted more frequently, because the anticipation is they don't have the security measures or their systems really with the capability of catching it. We have completed a number of security upgrades. We have a number that are still underway, as well as some network improvements that will significantly improve the security of our system over the next several months. In addition to that, we are working on some GIS improvements as we discussed at the budget workshop that will make access to information easier for the public. We are working on giving building permits into the GIS system so that people can get those in there rather than having to do public records requests. So some of those efficiencies will be working on and we have included a project position in the budget to accomplish some of those efforts. In our sanitation budget, that's our garbage fund. We have seen an increase in expenses there. That is primarily and pretty much solely due to a contracted CPI increase. So we have a contract with waste management for our garbage pickup services within the city. And within that contract, they have a garbage CPI, which is different than the, just the consumer CPI. And that, that guides any increases in garbage collection services. So that is something that's part of our contract with them. In our fiber optic network funds, we have included a $1.2 million project for a backbone extension. It is, it is entirely grant dependent. There is a lot of broadband dollars that are coming through and will continue to come through. We are competitively pursuing dollars to expand our system downtown, which will bring additional competitive services from more service providers to our businesses in the downtown core. Currently, our fiber backbone does not extend down First Avenue. And we also need to do a realignment of our system, our fiber. We have our economic development dark fiber as well as our government dark fiber lines. Were originally designed and installed below our city parking lot in downtown. And one of our projects identified in the fiber optic network is moving that line, both of those lines out of the city parking lot and into the street, which will enable us to look at upward development in that parking lot, including a potential parking garage in the upcoming years. In police services, again, a reminder that we've included a additional police officer. We have a grant submitted to the office, federal office of justice programs for cops hiring grant that would provide us funding, partial funding for that position over a period of three years. And, and we're hopeful on getting that, that's been, that grant's been included in our budget. We also have some retirement payouts that have been included in police. And again, with the police officer position, again, earlier I talked about our approach to budgeting for vacancies. It's the same approach with the police officer position. So sometimes we see savings as a result of people coming in, not being at fully benefited or hired in, which leaves us some flow again, if we have an unexpected retirement in a year, we have turnover in the year, or it becomes money that becomes available for projects. In police capital projects, we've included four police cars in fiscal year 2021. And that also includes the communication upgrades for all of those cars. So our police cars are, they're cars that are fully, fully computer, computerized. So we have computers in all those cars. We've got the cameras in all the cars. So on the communication side, that includes outfitting all of the cars. As discussed during the workshop, if for some reason we don't receive the federal grant, then the plan would be to reallocate funds from one of the police cars to ensure that we could add the police officer position. Interesting of note, as we were looking at that analysis between fiscal year 2010 and the proposed budget for 2021 and the number of personnel. And fiscal year 2021 with personnel that we have proposed for police, that's our police officers, as well as our community resource officers. With that additional position, it will get us back up to the personnel numbers that we had in the police department in 2010. So we have actually had a lesser number of personnel in police. We, there was a cut that was made in about 20. I'm sure the chief remembers. So that will get us back to staffing levels that we had a decade ago in police. And then again, in fire services, it includes a point five FTE assistant. And so you see the point five in fire services, the point five above in central services. Again, just a quick summary, and we went over this in the budget workshop. We have included a number of projects in our budget and they are all projects that have come out of master plans that have been completed in the last few years as prioritized in the council adopted city strategic plan. And we've covered a number of these different projects, so I'll just kind of skim through there fairly quickly. And then finally, in our proposed budget for fiscal year 2022, we've included a number of planning and rate studies. This includes the comprehensive, completing our comprehensive plan update, a city parking study, which one thing I didn't note at the last meeting that I'd like to note tonight is it's not only looking at the need and demand for parking generally in the downtown core as well as at the city beach, but this will also be a comprehensive ADA assessment. So really looking at ADA parking and compliance and recommendations in that regard. That is something that we haven't done for many years and we are long overdue in that regard. We will be doing a city equipment and vehicle assessment and audit. Quests of council in our strategic planning, our impact fees and jumping to the bottom, our water and wastewater rates and study. And we're underway with that. You will see that come back next month with a recommendation for a word of contract. We are underway with our urban area transportation master plan and have also included urban area water and wastewater assessment and master plan, as well as the watershed recreation plan. Sarah and I are happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions? No? Okay. We will now prepare to proceed with the public hearing. The public hearing is for comments only. Please do not address any questions to council or to city staff. If council members have questions for the person testifying, they should ask those questions at the time of their testimony. For those in attendance here in chambers this evening, if you would like to speak, you will need to complete a sign up form available at the table by the door and hand it to Melissa, our city clerk. Please do not approach the dais. If you have any written materials for council, please hand those to the city clerk. For those participating on Zoom, please note that you will need a working microphone on your phone or computer to speak. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen asking whether you would like to unmute. Then you will need to unmute yourself in order to be heard. The public hearing is now open to accept public testimony on the fiscal year 2022 budget and the city's intent to use foregone levying authority. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to testify on these matters? Doesn't look, doesn't seem so, okay. So the public hearing is now closed. Pursuant to Idaho code section 50-1003, city council shall, prior to the commencement of a new fiscal year, pass an ordinance to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance. With the public hearing now closed, we will move on to agenda item 7B, the annual appropriation ordinance, and begin with council deliberation and any final questions for staff. Any final questions from council? Okay, I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, termed the annual appropriation ordinance pursuant to Idaho code 50-1003, appropriating $40,597,539 to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Sandpoint, Idaho, for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021. Levying a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and specifying the objects and purpose for which said appropriations is made, providing for severability and an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only.
So moved.
This will be a roll call vote?
Are we going to have discussion now that we've moved?
We can certainly have discussion.
Okay. I, Madam President, I, I would like to make a motion to earmark $5,000 of the trails, $50,000 that was appropriated specifically for the Ponderay Bay Trail. I had a discussion with the president of the organization and she said there are some areas in need of attention. And I think that is HM of the city. And we've spent plenty of money in the past acquiring different parcels of land. So I would like to see that some of that trails money that we have out there specifically put toward. There's some sloping and some dangerous areas where after doing maintenance on the trail, all volunteer. She felt need to be addressed. So on behalf of the Ponderay Bay Trail, I was hoping to earmark $5,000 of that, $50,000 specifically for that trail.
So can we capture that in a motion?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to appropriate $5,000 of the $50,000 out of the recreation plan budget. I'm not sure what that is, what line item that is specifically for the Ponderay Bay Trail maintenance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we know how much money of the, of that 50,000 will go towards the Bay Trail already?
That $50,000 that we had budgeted, our priority for trail connectivity was the trail connected connectivity on North Boyer. That hasn't been completed. We are anticipating a grant opportunity for that coming up in September, October, and had planned on submitting a grant application. At this point, we are not sure what the associated match will be, but we do know that there will be a match requirement with that. In addition, with Maeve coming on board in person next month as our parks planning and development manager. One of the things that she will be doing is, is walking all of the trails and really developing a trail master plan, both for improvements as well as maintenance to come to the council.
So will the $50,000, in its entirety be used for match? Is that what you're saying?
That's what it had been budgeted for, yes.
So it can't be used as match if we take $5,000 out of it because it's still going to a trail?
There is a possibility that we may not need the full $50,000 for a match, but we will not know that until the grant opportunity comes out, the announcements come out next month.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Is there a chance that we could address this once we find out if that match is in place?
Yes.
What would that look like?
We would come back to council. So applying for that grant will require that we have a resolution from the council to apply at the time that we get that resolution. We would have our budget for the project and know what the associated match is. If council chose to wait to that and until that time and the full 50,000 was not required, then council at that time could direct staff to allocate a portion of the $50,000 to the Ponderay Bay Trail. I would say before that date too, we will have Maeve here and she'll have the time to go down and do the assessment of the trail and really understand what improvements are within our city limits and what the associated costs would be associated with them.
Madam President?
Yes.
That specifically was within our city limits that the discussion was had that I had with the Bay Trail president, because I asked specifically about, okay, we know where the trail stops. And then I would have a question. What is the anticipated cost of that connection piece? And what usually there's a smaller percentage of match for that? Do we have any of those numbers at all?
Off the top of my head, I believe our connection, our connection on that section was in the range of, that's what I thought, four hundred thousand. It's a four hundred thousand dollar project.
And are we talking, was that LTAC grant money or?
We will have the opportunity. We've identified that as a project under the filed pedestrian safety grant as well as TAP.
Okay, and what are the percentage matches usually on those projects?
I don't know off the, I don't know off the top of my head.
Does Amanda know? So. Okay, so seven percent of four hundred thousand? So somebody do the math, but I don't think that comes to fifty.
I would say also the reason we included fifty in there is our four hundred thousand was based on our estimates for that project from two years ago. So I suspect that we'll have inflationary increases from what we had projected with the four hundred.
Okay.
Any additional discussion?
I think everybody's passionate about the Ponderay Bay Trail and the maintenance of it. I think be fiscally responsible of us to wait and get the administration in place to be able to determine their budgets and how they're going to spend those. That's within a month or so, you say?
Yeah, I would say that we will probably be back in sometime in late October with the resolution for the grant application.
Okay, thank you.
My last comment would just be a safety issue. Bay Trail Run occurs, and there were thought to be some safety issues. And in my opinion, five thousand dollars seems like a very small chunk to assure that the city doesn't end up with any liability issues. I'm sure the Bay Trail Run covers insurance, but we all know how that doesn't always cover everything. So that's just something else to put out there. And that was really how a lot of this conversation started was safety on that level, and it is heavily, heavily used. So it may be worth waiting, I agree, but it most might also not be worth waiting for.
To follow up on that, so who is responsible for ensuring the safety during that run? Is is there agreement between the city and the Friends of the Ponderay Bay Trail? I don't, I just don't know how it's organized.
I do not have the answer to that question for you.
Do they have to permit it?
They would have to get a permit for it, yes. So in that case, it is permitting. What I would say, Council President, too, is if there's a safety concern, I'm not aware of that having been shared at with city staff, but we can certainly go out and do an assessment and take a look at our maintenance budget, too, and if there's something that needs to be done, we can take a look at that before October as well.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
No further comments.
Okay. Melissa, procedurally, where are we at? So I had, I think we had a motion and a second to pass the ordinance on its first reading by title only. We had an amendment. So we need to vote on the amendment. Is that correct? And we had a second on the amendment, so I think we're set without any additional discussion, set to vote on the amendment.
Councilwoman Sherman?
No.
Councilwoman Groth?
No.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrel?
Not to disregard what Councilwoman Rule said, I think it's something we should follow up on. This seems like it'd be wise to wait, so no.
Councilwoman McAllister?
No.
Councilwoman Darling?
No.
Motion fails. So I believe we're back to the motion on the ordinance passing by its first reading by title only. So this will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes. Motion passes. The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrel?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
The motion passed. This ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules and fiscal year 2022 Sandpoint City Budget is hereby approved and adopted, including the expenditure of funds for specific lease for the 2021-2022 renewal term Columbia Bank lease numbers nine two nine one zero 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 five nine six and one eight two two eight two nine. For the record, council's resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-nine passed on July twenty second, twenty-first, 2021, stating intent to use foregone levying authority will be filed with the Bonner County Clerk and the Idaho Tax Tax Commission pursuant to Idaho Code Section sixty-three dash eight zero two E. On July twenty-first, 2021, pursuant to Idaho Code sixty-three dash one three one one A, council scheduled a public hearing to take public testimony regarding proposed new fees and existing fees proposed to increase more than five percent with notice published twice in the Bonner Bonner County Daily Bee. We'll begin with a presentation from City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton and Treasurer Finance Director Sarah Lins.
Sarah's going to take the lead on this one.
Here, the, we had already given a presentation on the new or fees above the five percent here above or on the screen. In addition, we wanted to address the question that was on, that was brought up, that we wanted to look into on the bed and breakfast and daycare operation license. So Amanda is here to give that.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening. We did our homework as requested. Thank you for asking the question regarding the the fee and the language used in the fee. This fee was initiated in two thousand and five. At that time, it was in fact proposed as a result of the anticipated time to inspect these types of facilities. The actual verbiage through the meeting minutes conveyed that really the focus was around tourist home license and that the necessity for bed and breakfast and daycare operations was not necessarily a requirement. It was just anticipated that this might be something that we should assess. Nonetheless, it was adopted as shown there. In two thousand and fifteen, we revamped the proposed fees and separated them out, as you see below, with the two, the renewal fee of twenty-five dollars. Following that, in two thousand and eighteen, when we incorporated software program to monitor and for short-term rentals, we increased the fee from the one hundred and twenty-five to the two hundred, or actually, at the time, it was, yeah, two hundred, I'm sorry, and the fees that you see there below. Since that time, sorry, this is a bit long-winded, but I think the history is important. Since that time, we have not been enforcing the line item that's crossed out up above, referencing tourist homes, bed and breakfast, and daycare operations. We've only been enforcing and applying the fees that you see there below under short-term rentals. Although the technology is being reassessed, and that is why we have a a strike through the fifty-dollar technology fee because we're not currently using that software. Staff are recommending and have included in this the fees to remain the same because after an analysis, these fees that are reflected do not holistically cover staff time associated with processing short-term rentals. In short, we do not need additional inspection fees for bed and breakfast or daycare operations. Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there anything else on this item? Okay. Does council have any questions? The rules and procedure for this public hearing are the same as recited earlier. We will now proceed with the public hearing. And the public hearing is now open to accept public testimony and propose new fees and existing fees proposed to increase more than five percent. Is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to testify regarding fees?
No, Madam Council President.
Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. With the public hearing being now being closed, we'll move on to Agenda Item seventy and begin with council deliberation and any final questions for staff. Here, so. So I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for adoption of new city fees and changes to existing fees. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes. Motion passes. First item under new business this evening is the construction contract award for the 2021 North Boyer Road Rehabilitation Project. City Engineer Dan Tadic will provide a presentation.
Good evening. Figure I'll try out the podium tonight. As a follow-on to our discussion from last meeting, the North Boyer Road Rehab rehabilitation project is the second phase of our paving efforts for this fiscal year. The project extends from Schweitzer Cut Off to Jenny Lane. Staff memo covers much of the specifics, but I wanted to update the council and the public on schedule. Talking to Interstate, the schedule is largely dictated by the availability of the milling machine, which remove remove the asphalt. The current plan is for that to be onsite on Wednesday, September eighth. That's a one-day effort. The next couple of days will be any soft spot repair in the roadway, grading and prep for pavement. And then the following Monday, Tuesday will be paving. So we're anticipating the project paved out by the fifteenth of September. Substantial completion requires paving by September seventeenth, so they'll be ahead of that schedule. With that, I'm happy to take any questions council may have.
Questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Would anyone from the public care to comment on this matter? All right, thanks. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution awarding the construction contract for the 2021 North Boyer Road Rehabilitation Project. Is there a motion?
Removed.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote?
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes. Motion passes. The final item on the agenda this evening is the Treasurer's Quarterly Financial Report for a quarter ending June thirtieth, 2021. Finance Director Sarah Lins will give us a brief presentation.
Good evening again. We have finished up and closed out the third quarter, and I have updated our third quarter report. I, this is the link here is to the attachment that would attach to your packet. It's just the state-required format that we are required to present that. It's also on our website as well. I have changed the format a little bit to be more interactive with Open Gov, clickable, and before it was more paste and copy of the actual report. So as you'll see, the expenses here broken out by the actuals in the June column here with the budget, with the very with variances here as well. There's a high overlook on right here for the general fund, the special revenue, by special revenue funds, and then also enterprise funds. Going down to our general fund expenses by type here, these are all clickable again to get in and drill down to what you, if you want to see any details in there. I'm not going to click in them because we could click and click and click all night long. I wouldn't try to do that with the budget. Here is a detail of the general fund expenses by type. So you got salary and wages, benefit, employee benefits from purchase tech all the way down to our inner fund transfers out. So you have again the June and the June actuals in the budget. You know, again, this will allow you to open up what type of salaries this is. I won't open all of them, but you can. So this will get you again with the variances of what's left and then the percentages here. With a little bit of caveat on the bottom of where we're at percentage-wise, we are seventy-five percent of the way through our budget as of the end of the third quarter. So you see here the sixty-two point one five of personnel expenditures through that time. So we are well under the next, I'll scroll down to our trending down here on our third quarter compared to prior years. This is lower than in the prior years. We do have a few unfilled positions at this point. That's driving some of that. Hopefully to have them filled soon, then all of us are. The general fund maintenance and operations, that is a little bit above last year, but right, that one fluctuates a lot with what's just going on, maintenance operations, when the timing of things is done, especially the repairs when how a lot of a spring, if we can get out there early in the spring to start parks, and I mean, there's just so many variables across the board, especially in general fund, especially when talking police to parks to all that. But this is a good snapshot of of trending. All expense trending here, that's all of the salaries and benefits, everything. So we're about where we were at last year at this time. Caveat to all this is it looks good and we're not in any, anything that need to bring up specifically, else I would. General fund revenues to, again, same thing with, oops, scroll down too far. To note is the, this is the the June to budget to actual. The, when we did budgeting last year, we were in the midst of the beginning of COVID. We were conservative when we budgeted our expenses and but and revenues. So you will see at the end, why do talk about a little bit of the resort city tax, where we where we're at with the resort city tax. But you will see also in here where our local, our local shared revenues, local government shared revenues. We are, sorry, state government shared revenues here. We are at basically nine or eighty-five percent collected, which you would expect about seventy-five right now. That is a conservative budgeting part. So just to note that that it does play into this, this, these revenues, that they are a little bit above where we were at last year at this time. And you'll see that right there, I should say, a little, about fifteen percent above where we're at last year, so. Then I have in here done by each special revenue fund, I have done by revenues and expenses, an overview, highlight, just revenues and expenses. Again, you can drill into all this to get to the details of it. But I just did a high level for each one of these ones. Capital project, again, nothing to note that is concerning on these ones. Recreation Fund. Park Improvement Fund, that is, the memorial is, project is wrapping or was in the middle of wrapping up at this point. Now it is pretty much. So you'll see that that's variance is right on track there for that budget to actual. To Enterprise Fund, again, clickable through of the revenues, the expenditure types. Again, not much to note here, our projects. Jennifer and I were talking about this just the other day about our year end is kind of wonky and the fact that it, right when we start vamping up for our big summer season, we're actually done now. So I mean, with our budget and our everything. So unfortunately, our third quarter usually doesn't encompass the most of everything that happens because we don't get to hear about that until usually December or January, and we're doing the audit report. So our projects, which are the majority of a lot of the waters and sewer main big ticket items are not even barely sorted yet. So they look very out of place for the expenditures, actual budget actuals. Again, you're used to seeing these ones, they didn't, nothing of those ones changed. I did break out the wastewater treatment, so you can click through those again to see details. But just actuals on revenues and expenses. Nothing to note here. And garbage, I added in garbage in here. That wasn't in there before, but I did add that. The last one I do want to definitely highlight and talk about is our resort city tax, seven percent. I'm going to scroll down to, on this part here at the bottom, it it's a quarter over quarter. So when you look at the fiscal year twenty-one, our seventy-three thousand, what we received in the first quarter, the second quarter showing year on year-to-date as of that. So it's a cumulative amount, not in what we received in that quarter. I just wanted to point out the third quarter, just looking at that. I just wanted to point out the third quarter, just looking at that compared to any of the prior years. It is well over what, what we have ever collected. And with that had brought a lot of additional, I mean, that meet more people in town, more creating more rentals of properties and hotels, creating much more, a lot more people in town, which does bring up the fact of more, that has caused more expenses on the, on we. So for example, garbage collection in the city beach has been, I would say, four times the amount what it was last year. So things like that also for our police coverage in our festival. We had a high, much higher police presence this year, which has been over time. So I want Jennifer jumping at any time here to that. Anything else that you can think of? We are with this and anticipating the, the remaining amount of costs that will be till the end of the year if, if of this fiscal year, if this trend continues, we may come back at next council to accommodate the, for these expenses and this revenue to open the budget potentially. We still assessing that because as things are rolling in, it's, it's very shocking to see the numbers in here, how, how much they have affected this. And also on that, I don't know if you want to jump in and say anything?
Yeah, we are, we are in discussions about coming back to council next month, asking you to open the budget to reflect both the unanticipated additional revenues from the resort city tax. Again, this is hotel, motels, bed tax and to cover unanticipated expenses that we have incurred this, this summer. So the two are related to one another. As Sarah mentioned, we have increased overtime costs in police and we're kind of waiting to see what that looks like with payroll coming, coming in. We had authorized because we didn't know what to expect around festival. We canceled all the overtime during the festival weeks and we had police pretty much across our entire police force working overtime for those two weeks. In addition to that, it's, it's small things across our system that we partially use these funds to, to pay for, but we're seeing expenses much higher than, than what we have seen in previous years. It goes to garbage and our garbage costs at city beach. So what happens is all of our cans are dumped, they go into the bin at city beach and then we have to pay for, then we have to pay for the tonnage fee for garbage, but our garbage is up substantially in parks. Our supplies are up substantially in parks for toilet paper in the bathrooms, it's paper towels in the restrooms. Our lifeguard costs are up substantially this year and much of that is due to the job market we're currently experiencing in order to have lifeguards this summer, which is a priority for council. We had to do wage increases for lifeguards in order to be able to attract people to work for us and, and cover the parks this summer. In addition, it got warmer faster and stayed warm as, as we all know, for a much longer period of time at high temperatures. So commonly in the summer months, we see days and sometimes weekends where we pull the lifeguards off the stands because we just aren't seeing the crowds down at city beach because we have a rainy weekend, we have a rainy day. Our guards have been on the stands pretty much every day that they're scheduled all throughout the summer. So our costs have been higher for guards as well. So we have costs across public safety as well as our park system that are unanticipated this year. And again, this goes back to the benefit of being a resort city. It allows, if our taxpayers approve by a super majority for us to put taxes that are primarily targeted towards tourists who are coming into the community and it's a way to accumulate tourist dollars to pay for the impacts that they create on our city and offset those impacts on the property taxpayers. So normally we have things that exceed, we'll have things, we're under budget in some areas, we're over budget in other areas. You can see those things in our treasurer's report and we can cover them in the budget approved by council. And we aren't looking at opening the budget, but in this case, the real benefit to our taxpayers is this might be an appropriate time to reopen the budget due to these unexpected expenses that are really related to the tourism and have the tourist dollars pay for those and free up our local property tax dollars for other expenses or if they're unexpended, they roll into future years for projects, for services for the city, for our local residents. So we did want to bring that to your attention. We'll be looking at what all of the costs are, are looking like as we process and get payroll reports this week as well as we're kind of going across the divisions and looking at costs. But we have a number of very notable areas where we're seeing expenses this year, 100% of what we have seen in previous years due to, again, the tourist impact that we've all seen and felt this summer.
Excuse me, Jennifer, can you just scroll so we can see the graphic again, please? Thank you.
I have a question. So if you're to, if council were to approve reopening the budget, would you have suggestions specifically for how those funds would be transferred or reallocated?
Right, our suggestion would be it's unanticipated costs that we have incurred this summer as a result of these impacts. So again.
But to move from resort city in, income to which specific category?
So right now, we're paying for those expenses with budget savings and other areas. So it would be property tax dollars primarily.
It would actually be increasing revenues and expenses, increasing the additional money than what was already in the budget.
Thanks.
So it would be a suggestion on how much for which funds, like if it was partial lifeguard, partial rec fund, partial general fund. At that analysis, again, we'll do over the next week and.
Great. Any other questions from council? Would anyone in the public care to comment on this matter? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, with no further business before the council, this meeting is now adjourned at 6:47 PM. Thanks, everybody.